Call made in order. Turn off your cell phones if you have them, put them on with you. Joining us, we're going to announce that the executive session will be held at 6:30 evening to discuss personnel moving. Ladies and gentlemen, the president and the secretary.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Colder.
Present.
Mr. McHale.
Here.
Mrs. May?
Here.
Mr. McAllan?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mrs. Sarab?
Here.
Dr. Zorch? Dr. Zorch?
Come on, Ben, bring him out.
We love him.
What did he do?
He probably parked on a park lot somewhere.
I wonder if we should just put him on the phone? I can, I could do that. Do you want to?
Yep.
What was it, the board?
It's just spinning, and it comes back on and then it kicks him out again.
Do you want me to text him? Do you actually need to?
Yes.
Do you have his number? I have a hand for that. Hang on. Why don't you go with the other ones? Yeah. Go with the other ones. There are, he's right there. Oh, did everybody?
Yeah.
Hang on. He's running, he's calling, calling. Oh, that was my idea. Oh, he's going to happen. My Dr. Zorch, can you not hear us through the, the, uh, smartphone? Okay, we're going to call you on the conference, okay? Okay, bye. Eric, are you still on here? Eric? There he is. Eric, is that you? Eric? Okay, we're going to get, um...
You don't like me or what?
We're just going to get Dr. Zorch on the phone with you, okay? One second. Hello, Dr. Zorch? All right?
Yes.
And Eric, can you hear us?
Yeah.
All right. Old school technology. Did you want to get? All right, so, Dr. Zorch, we're doing roll call, so, are you here?
I'm present.
We're good.
Superintendent, report, or, uh, whatever.
Thank you, Mr. McAllan. Good evening and happy Groundhog Day. Um, I'm beginning to think that every day is Groundhog Day for the past year. Just to review, as stated in our last Board of Education meeting, this evening's committee of the whole meeting was rescheduled a week earlier in order to reassess our county and local COVID data and make recommendations regarding any change to our instructional model. We are very happy that our county's incident and percent positivity rate for COVID has continued to decline. Even though our county currently remains in a substantial transmission rate, our county continues to move closer to a moderate transmission rate for COVID-19, and our hospitals currently are not overwhelmed with sick COVID patients. Additionally, the Greater Latrobe School community's zip code range, which includes Latrobe, Hostetter, Pleasant Unity, and one-third of the population in Greensburg, based on the past seven days, actually falls into the moderate rate of transmission for COVID. Again, that is within the Greater Latrobe zip code range only. We are happy to report that 433 teachers, staff, and bus drivers received the first dose of the Moderna vaccine and will receive the second dose in the upcoming weeks. A special thanks goes to the medicine shop in Latrobe for providing the vaccines and to Lori Stroupay from Pennsylvania Education Association. Receiving the vaccine for our staff and bus driver greatly assists in protecting our teachers, staff, and bus drivers from contracting COVID-19, and it paves the way for our schools to open and remain open for brick-and-mortar instruction for our students. Please note that the district is being proactive in responding to staff and bus drivers who may have adverse side effects after receiving the second dose of the Moderna vaccine. Therefore, we do have a calendar change this evening. All of our buildings, elementary through secondary, will participate in full remote learning on Monday, February 22nd and Monday, March 1st to provide our staff and bus drivers with an additional 24 hours to recover from any adverse reaction to the vaccination. Having remote learning on Monday, February 22nd and Monday, March 1st will assist us in any staffing and bus driver shortages that may possibly occur as a result of individuals experiencing residual side effects from the vaccine. At this point in time, in addition to our elementary schools being open full-time for brick-and-mortar instruction, it is my recommendation that our junior and senior high schools open for full-time brick-and-mortar instruction beginning Monday, February 8th. As always, parents and guardians may choose to have their students participate in full-time GLSD online instruction as opposed to the brick-and-mortar study. As we transition, transition back to our brick-and-mortar instructional model at our junior and senior high schools, please note the following. Number one, if your student is currently participating in hybrid A or B, and you wish for your student to return to full brick-and-mortar instruction, no action is required. However, if you wish to change your student from hybrid A or B to full-time GLSD online, you must contact the office of your student's school by this Friday, February 5th. Likewise, if your student is currently participating in full-time GLSD online and you are choosing for them to return to brick-and-mortar instruction, you must also contact the office of your student's school to make the change by the conclusion of Friday, February 5th. All EWCT students will also attend brick-and-mortar five days a week at the EWCTC school. Please be reminded that the school district signed an attestation form ensuring implementation of mitigation efforts, which include mandated face coverings and recommendations for pre-K to 12 schools following identification of COVID-19 cases and the closing of schools. Parents and guardians are reminded to review the Greater Latrobe School District protocols found under the COVID-19 tab on our district website. We look forward to having all of our students back in our schools for face-to-face instruction and increased socialization. Greater Latrobe School District will continue to monitor our county and school community COVID data and do our very best to provide brick-and-mortar instruction for our students while keeping the health, safety, and welfare of our entire school community as a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zorch. Slusman, report? Are we hearing this?
I'm carrying this here.
Hang on a second. This has been an opportunity for anybody who's already... We're going to be limited to five minutes. Come up to the podium here. You'll worry about the call.
Okay, Mr. McAllan. Okay, are you sure? Uh, there's two items on, uh, for next week. Uh, the first is a tax abatement approval. Uh, this is a, uh, house that's been falling down and we're going to do a tax abatement, but only when the tax abatement money is going to be used by the property owner to have the house. Uh, this matter will permanently give the lot square and ready to save it for the neighbors. The second item is a tax assessment appeal approval for the First Petro Company. Uh, we talked to you about this. This was a, um, tax assessment where the, um, uh, county assessment board came up with a number and the, uh, taxpayer, um, took an appeal from that number. We also took an appeal of that number and as reported to you, the settlement is just going to be for the, um, county assessed, uh, board number as it was in the, as it was in the beginning. And that's the, as I reported.
Can I do this?
That was all.
Is not... Remember, as a march, shall be ruled without end.
Wait, have an email.
Mr. Secretary, Education Department, Mrs. May?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in for adoption of our decision number 166 to approve the updated Greater Latrobe School District's phase of school opening health and safety plan for the 2021 school year and authorize administration to submit the plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Education and post publicly on the district's website as required.
So good. Will you give me a second? Any questions over the question?
Yes, I have a statement I'd like to make before I come in, please. Um, because of my ongoing concerns for the health and safety of both our staff and students, I cannot vote in favor this evening of going back to full-time in-person instruction at the secondary level for the following reasons. Our community transmission numbers are still in substantial. I would like us to wait until we are two weeks out of substantial or our staff has been able to have their second round of vaccine and the necessary extra days to achieve full efficacy four years ago. According to a recent article in the PSBA Bulletin, only 20% of PA schools are back full in person. I am surprised there were so few. It certainly must be acknowledged that 80% of our students' cohort of test campaigns within Pennsylvania are in the same boat education. And we learned this evening that 10 schools within Westmoreland County are also still in hybrid with only three in full brick-and-mortar. Why can't we continue in hybrid? It is working and it is allowing for necessary social distancing. As I toured through the secondary schools illustrated last week, many of our classrooms just are only three and a half to four feet distant. That is for an 85-minute period in a high school. Much closer spacing and far longer times than the CDC, the Department of Education, and Department of Public Health recommend. And that's in hybrid. Those situations become much more dire in full brick-and-mortar. Our district has always been a leader in technology and in professional development to make that technology a lodestar for educational excellence. We are fortunate to be able to provide both Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hospitals slots for students without Wi-Fi. We are better prepared... for the hybrid model of education to perhaps many other districts within our county and maybe in the Western PA region. Yet we refuse to give our teachers the time and latitude to make hybrid work. This disregard for our superior hardware and technology and training of our staff makes me question why we have invested so much in this area if we are not willing to allow our teachers to show its full capabilities. And please remember, in-school instruction during a pandemic looks very different from in-person instruction before the pandemic. It may not be the panacea everyone believes it to be. Elementary kids are still required to be socially distanced from their friends at all times. Secondary students are not working in groups. They are not doing meaningful peer work, and they are not doing, like, working on labs. Just because they are physically in the building does not mean there is significant meaningful instruction we've heard. And conversely, it is also true that when they are hybrid, that there is zero meaningful instruction happening. I request that until the entire staff has had their second shots, we are so close, and I would hate to think that a rushed decision on our part to, to go back or go back to in-person instruction would put any of our staff or students in harm's way. Thank you.
Any other questions on the hook? One more thing?
I was, uh, just saying, I was at the tour as well, um, for most of it and, and several of the buildings, three buildings, uh, to be exact. I felt very comfortable with our staff, um, and principals explaining to us exactly what was happening, how the, how the students would come back if they were full-time, full student occupancy in the buildings. But we know that's not correct either because I think there's somewhere around 700, 800 or still, uh, it was around 450 or 700 that were still going to be online. I can't remember what that count was.
I have 600. As of today.
And that was school-wide, all schools.
Right.
So, I felt comfortable with that. I spoke to the principals. They felt comfortable. They can make a combination of putting kids in our rooms, other auditoriums, spread the kids out to keep them safe. Um, I felt comfortable walking through and talking to some of the teachers. I talked to some of the staff. I talked to some of the custodians and our, and our facilities director. In addition, I also earlier this evening asked Dr. Zorch to explain the difference between substantial, as stated by the Department of Health of the DA, and what substantial means as it relates to the hospital. And I thought I would ask Dr. Zorch, if he has a moment, to please discuss that one more time so the public can hear it so we can get on the record.
Do you have a question?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
The reason that substantial was fully replaced was to justify all the mitigation efforts that were done by mistake. Because the concern was that substantial community transmission that the hospital system was overwhelmed by COVID-19 and that there was pretty hospital systems at extreme stress and resulting in not being able to take therapy. Even though our county numbers still look substantial, the hospital, hospital basin rate has come way down in our county. So, there is not a threat on the hospital system right now as it was a month ago. It's probably going to continue to come down because we see the case numbers continually drop in our county. So, the hospital will be less stressed. There was also a large study done in the country. State of North Carolina looking at multiple school districts and multiple students and looking at community transmission as a result of school transmission. And their conclusion in that, that study was that schools do not contribute to community transmission. They said, really, kids can't get sick. They said, really, the staff member can't get sick. But then, then causing the community transmission to make to Skywalker didn't work, was not seen to be the case. But from that study, which was signed, seems that we are safe and a lot of our students that are back in school we saw here from decreased breath on the hospital system, also the study that was done. This is a recent study. And this was done, uh, during the height of the pandemic as well. So, I think, uh, with all the other things the CDC has said that our approach to the president, the president's time is clean for schools to be open. One of the mandates that they want schools to do is to, uh, facilitate making errors when your children are breathing in school, which we've done. Our school has done that. We're, at the beginning, looking at that, as that has been done. We do have a ventilation system in place that supposedly will protect students from getting sick. As long as children do the social distancing and mask wearing, the staff does the same, we should, uh, be safe. That doesn't mean somebody's going to get sick. It probably will happen. But everyone needs to know too that children with this disease do not seem to get sick from it. Some do unfortunately. That happens with the flu too. So, we have always been worried about the staff. We need to, we need to try to protect the staff. I don't know what the age differential is on our staff, but the level of immunity from one vaccine is not too bad. At least 50%. And if you look at flu vaccine, a flu vaccine in the best year is 50%. But even with one vaccination, we should have some protection for our staff. The younger the staff are, the better the response will have that they may be protected with one shot. We don't want to take that chance by not getting a few vaccinations. Obviously, that's the recommendation, but... I think with all the things that the school system has done, you're looking at why the expansion was put into place with the path hospital system. I think in the present time, we are in a situation where we've been wanting to get our kids back in school. I think it's time to do it. I think it's time to get everybody back. Obviously, we're going to be monitoring the situation and if things change, we're going to be changing our, our programs. But right now, I think, uh, we've got to act and the numbers are good and we've got to get our kids back in school where it's best, uh, by our teachers and our school community.
Could you also, could you also touch on what we talked about as far as the behavior possible here at Pittsburgh about the case number there currently? And then also, can you, and I, I know you were on the call when we were talking about the mental and physical abuse issues that we're seeing not only in our district but across all the districts and the number, and the higher numbers of mental health issue as well?
Is that for me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's no question about that. When you look across the country as a whole, that's, that's very serious issue. Uh, there's tremendous threat on students. There's a tremendous threat on, uh, the community dealing with kids being, um... There was a, we had a county meeting at the pass for it here, not about a month or so ago, and I can't remember the exact date. It was in December and then, uh... The one of the main things that I got out of this thing was the underreported of child abuse and all that kind of stuff that we're listening to of the kids not leaving the school. So, getting our kids back to the school, we're, we're helping our community out. We're helping it. I know there's still a pandemic going on, but again, kids are at risk from the disease as much as they are from killing themselves. We're getting beat up or abused in a home that's not a good home. But if you get them out of, out of school or they're around people that can watch them and keep tracking it for a thing, I think we're doing a service to that small number of children that are, that are probably around. And that's not the big case in our community and in others, and it's a tough attitude of consideration as well.
Then we also talked about the limited number of cases that we're seeing in Children's Hospital, uh, children?
Well, this was about a month and a half ago when we had the county meeting. And the comment that struck me the most was the nurse manager of Children's Hospital during the height of this whole thing post the, uh, uh, Thanksgiving, sparking cases that there were a number of cases in the Children's Hospital that were at a minimum. They weren't concerned. They weren't anywhere near to being overwhelmed or anywhere near to being stressed. I didn't know if it was that word, sir, but I was struck by the fact that she said that we're not that stressed right now. We don't have that many cases. But that doesn't mean it doesn't happen. It doesn't mean that these poor kids can't get the, uh, post, uh, the time of choice, the D syndrome off the back of the labels now, but obviously, that's always concerning and it's, it's, it's... You know, this, this really, I've not seen it to be of young kids for sure. The older kids, the bigger risk, even in that population, the kids are getting stressed, but the kids are in underlying condition. We're obviously giving people a chance to keep their children home, to be online. If they are at risk, because of some of these factors, they shouldn't be around anybody. The best chance is that they have that option to stay home. We're not putting those children at risk either. I think he gave that option to teachers as well. He thought that, the teacher thought that they were at increased risk or increased, uh, chance of getting sick and dying from this disease. He gave them the option to be online. Please start me if I'm on, Dr. Zorch. That was one of the, that's what he had a long time ago, Dr. Zorch. We're, we're doing the best we can to protect our students and our staff. We're not going to stop on the kids. It's going to happen. We're going to see kids get sick. We're going to see a dog get sick. Unfortunately, some of them will get really sick if they do get sick. If the testing dog turns, it's not that great with the kids for sure. And right now, these people are getting immunized. It's going to be some, it's going to be protection and the social distancing and the hand washing. It's going to be bathroom wearing. Those are, those are going to be perfect. That's the, that's the way the tough people are. You know, as long as they follow the direction and you finish keeping self-faith, it should be a test. You know, we have, we have a Chinese store open. We have a Walmart open. We have Lowe's open. We've got all those people watching the stores around hundreds and hundreds of people a day. And I haven't heard anything in the paper or seen anything in the news where they've become super spread as that. So, I'm confident in the things that we're doing, that we're going to protect our staff and our students. Thank you.
Can I have one more question, please? One more question I ask, Mr. Slusman. Uh, when we spoke earlier, we were talking about the modality of suicide and so and so. You had mentioned that we have, that the number of folks we had in mental health getting treated. But you also said there's a, a, a number that we can figure out because we don't know who's home and not being allowed to report. Can you explain how we treat the kids, the age of 14, that whole bit, and the short forms, just so everybody understands that as well? And I keep barking on the mental part because it's horrifying numbers that I'm seeing across the country.
Sure. Um, students in Pennsylvania can consent to mental health treatment when they turn 14. Right now, across the school district, we have 75 students in grades seven through 12 and an additional 63 students in grades K through six who receive mental health treatment at school during their school day. There is an option for online or virtual therapy, but especially for students who are ages 14 and older, if they are not in a home or in a situation where that is possible for privacy or consent reasons or even childcare or helping with younger siblings, uh, those students are going without therapy right now. And it is very important to have those students back in the school setting so that they can receive their consistent, regular therapy.
And then our most current, the most current year we have...
And then the most current, the most current year we have for full in-house school, aren't there about forty percent of that number as far as treatments? Or was it thirty or forty, can you tell?
Slightly, slightly different data. We have, we keep track of students who have expressed suicidal adiation to their school counselors, and if we keep tracking the way we are now, we're at about, we're headed for a forty-three percent increase from two years ago in students who are expressing suicidal adiation at our senior high school. Our our numbers will almost double from two years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Slavish.
You're welcome.
If I could just clarify for Dr. Zorch, I finally found it on my calendar. We attended a meeting with the Medical Expert Response Team within Allegheny and Westmoreland Counties. It was Wednesday, December sixteenth at six-thirty, and the representative from Children's Hospital in Pittsburgh, I'm glad Laurie Galovis has a better memory than I, I have it in my notes, was Marnie Komansky, who made the comments about the cases they were seeing at Children's Hospital. Again, that was back in December, December sixteenth. I just, Dr. Zorch had asked, and I didn't have it.
How many COVID cases you talk about, I don't know.
Pardon me?
You were talking about COVID cases, right?
Yes, COVID cases. Not mental health, I apologize.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Vice President. I do, I have a couple of comments and and a question. I think that we've been hearing for a long time how kids don't get sick with this COVID, and it seems to be something that keeps coming up meeting after meeting. In fact, sometimes we use the term, kids don't get as sick as they get with the flu. And in my heart, I I just lose my mind every time I hear, because I want to say, most kids don't, most kids don't. And that's great, and I'm thankful, and that's the only reason I consider even consider having these kids back in the school. But they can get sick, and they do get sick, and some of them get really sick. And some of them right here in our district have gotten really sick. And one child getting two sick is too many. So I can't see quite what you keep listening to that. Secondly, a comment was just made about store employees. The John Eagles open, the Walmart's open, Lowe's is open, store employees see people and they're not going to get sick. A store employee, a cashier encounters the same person for a few minutes at most when they check out from their cashier desk. A teacher in an elementary school spends the entire day with that cohort of students. A teacher in our junior high, our senior high sees a hundred students, a hundred twenty students, a hundred fifty students, and spends, as I recall, somewhere around eighty-five or ninety minutes at a time with those kids now, extended, long periods of time. Apples and oranges, we can't compare a checkout clerk at Lowe's to a teacher spending a ninety-minute period in a crowded classroom. So those are two different things again. What I saw when I toured the schools this week was administrators and students and teachers doing an amazing job. They are digging deep, they are going outside the box, they are trying everything in their power to keep this district full of students safe. And God bless them for that, because that's what makes Latrobe amazing, and excuse me. And I get it, kids want to be in school, parents want kids in school. I get it, I want them in school too. But the number of kids in a classroom in a hybrid situation, and the number of kids in a classroom with full work and order is a whole different story. And they're telling us they're doing everything in their power, and God bless them, I believe they are. There just isn't enough square footage, there just isn't. And so we can say, you know, our hospitals aren't ever crowded, or our teachers should just lock up and get out there. Or we can say, darn it, we got them vaccinated, they got their first round, give them a couple of weeks, let's have immunity built, protect them because we can, because we have the opportunity to make the choice to stay. They're in hybrid now, they're glad to be in school, their teachers are glad to help them, they're glad to see their classmates. But when we have twelve kids or fifteen kids in the classroom, it's a very different story than having twenty-five or thirty kids in a classroom. And that teacher has those kids crowded all around them because they're trying to spread their desk out as far as they possibly can, there just simply isn't enough square footage. And that teacher stays in that same room for ninety minutes. So we need to face what it really is. We can't pretend it's the same thing as a checkout clerk at the Lowe's. It's not.
That was not my statement.
And we, I didn't say it was your statement.
Okay.
But it was a statement made publicly by an expert, and it's apples and oranges, and it's not the same story. We have a responsibility to our students, we have a responsibility to our teachers and our staff, and we have a responsibility to the parents and the community, and they all have to be considered by us. We don't work for just one, we work for them all. And it's unreasonable to think that it's the same thing to have that classroom full as it is to have twelve kids in it, or ten kids in it. Teachers should be considered too. We like to say, if parents are worried or kids are scared, their kids don't have to come to school. And I think that's fabulous. We offer GLSD online, and God bless us that we do, because if it were my kid, he'd be on GLSD online. I don't have any kids in the school, but I care about those other thirty-seven hundred kids, thirty-seven hundred kids, just like they're mine. But the teachers don't get that choice. The teachers have a mortgage to pay. The teachers have to put food on the table, and if they decide they don't want to work under the rules that we make, they're only choices to not work.
I don't think that's correct.
Well, you know what they said? Dr. Zorch just said that the teachers can choose to stay home if they don't want to come to school. But from what I understand, the teachers have to have a pretty significant medical concern that they can dodge it. They can't just say, I don't want to be in a crowded classroom where I'm every day coming through the door and not knowing if today is the day I come home with COVID and take it to my family. They don't get to choose for that reason. So when we decide that we're going to go back, because a parent, a kid can choose, or a parent can choose GLSD online, we aren't giving that choice to our teachers. And that's not nothing. One last thing that I want to add, before we took this vote last month, the Health and Safety Committee met, and we heard not just from Dr. Zorch, but we heard her opinions from Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Mills, Dr. Moran. Do we know how they feel about this decision today, what we've heard from them?
I can tell you, when we met last time, two Mondays ago, their comment was, it needs to be, our numbers are declining, and if our numbers continue to decline, it needs to come to the decision of the board and the recommendation from the administration. There is no perfect day to go back. That's what they said, the decision needs to come, they did not feel.
So they are interested in giving an opinion today?
They did not, they did not feel, and I can look at who was here, because I know I'm missing.
Dr. Zorch.
Dr. Zorch was there, Mrs. Cozart was there, Mr. LaCassio was there, I was there, Mrs. Galovis, Mrs. Palace, Mr. Music. They, if the hos, like Dr. Zorch said, if the hospitals continue to see the decline as they have, and they're not stressed, and if the numbers in our area continue to decline, they said it's the decision of recommendation, administration decision of the Board of Education. That's why we didn't. I can tell you on that meeting, there were a couple of physicians who would have supported going back full-time then, five days a week, brick and mortar of the secondary, because they truly questioned differences in in cases coming up at the secondary level versus the elementary level. And the fact that their feelings were, that these students are together on the weekends and on the days off anyway, and they feel that we can regulate it more while they're in school during the time, and that actually it would be safer in school at times versus being at home. And those comments came from a couple of physicians, not the administration or board.
And that's something.
You interact with this position that said that, so I can get out whenever I want to say anything, but I'm good. Second of all, we would like, we start from pediatric, the article on pediatric, Dr. Tucker has the reference to it. I don't have access to it right now because I'm on my phone, or so am I, phone on the message board. But if you want to read that article and look about translation in schools, you're more than welcome to, we're not making anything up.
I can see.
And to think that with what we do in schools, with working in Lowe's or Walmart or wherever it serves, I resent those kinds of comments as well. So take that as real, I'm going to stick with my decision as far as I think right now it's time for the kids to go home.
And then a moment. There are none. Roll call, Mr. George, please. Little bit of a hot.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. LaCassio?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum? Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarath?
No.
Dr. Zorch?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozart?
No.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
You want to ask a comment?
Resolved that the Board of School Directors would agree over the preschool district hereby approve the updated state school opening plan and safety plans for the 2021 school year, and authorize the administration to submit the plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Education and post publicly on the District Website as required.
Who is the second then? Roll call. Look like Austin. Any discussion? Any discussion, person? Any discussion? Okay, you were right in first place.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarath?
No.
Dr. Zorch? Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Cozart?
No.
Mr. LaCassio?
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 167 to approve the updated rule of the preschool district's continuity of education plan for the 2021 school year, and authorize the administration to submit the plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Education and post publicly on the District Website as required.
May second, is there any questions, comments? All in favor, say yes.
Was that part of our reservation?
Is that correct on the view? This is Resolution 168.
168 approved the change.
Approved the change of school count.
Yes, we just voted on 167. 166 and 167, we had a roll call and voted it for seven-two. We are on 168 to approve changes to the school count.
Mrs. May made the motion, Mrs. Cozart second. Any other discussions, we're ready to vote on. We okay? Okay, Paul, I'm sorry. Well, that's a very, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
He says roll call here, should we have a roll call on that?
No, that was.
That was the previous one.
That's the one. That's for 167, sir.
All right, go. So we're on 168 now.
We just did.
We just did 168.
168, and so pre changes to the school count.
Yeah, right, we just opened. I don't want to speak.
Okay, sorry. Student report, welcome back, Lauren and Emma.
Hello, everyone, it's been a while. There's not too much to report on. At Bagley Elementary School, school picture makeup day is February third. At LIS Spirit Week is the eighth through the twelfth, and then for all elementary schools, Valentine's Day celebrations are the twelfth. At the junior high school, you all know they're still hybrid, ballcat time is continuing with auctions such as bag littering in the gym, study halls, and Valentine hard making, and spring sports are starting to begin. The boys' junior high baseball team just had tryouts, the girls volleyball team started today, and the new boys' junior high volleyball team just hired a new coach. As for the senior high school, you're all familiar with the schedule. We've been running on a hybrid schedule for grades nine to eleven in full-time, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday for seniors. We no longer have lunch and lunch, rather AV and C lunches, and there was just one concern that was brought to my attention with that schedule, was that it's making it difficult for clubs to meet without lunch and lunch. Everyone seems happy to be back in school. Some people, like I just said, miss the longer lunches and just have, clubs are having a hard time finding time to meet. Winter sports are continuing to occur with limited tickets per players for home matches or games. And the senior high drama club has started rehearsing for the spring musical, Bright Star Concert Edition, and the professionally recorded vertical show dates are April twenty-third through twenty-fifth, 2021. Watch for ticket sale information at latrovedramaclub.com, and have us all. Thank you for all.
Student report, Mr. George.
Just some, first of all, the kindergarten registration portal opened on the first, so that's out there, we are doing registration for kindergartners. But Mr. Palmer, I asked for some numbers before, and I just wanted to report, we have thirty-five hundred and sixty-two students enrolled at Greater Retro, and right now, we have twenty-nine, twenty-seven in brick and mortar, and six thirty-five online. That six hundred and thirty-five number is eighteen percent of our total enrollment, and of that six hundred and thirty-five that were online, sixty-five percent of those students or four hundred and fourteen were online at the junior high school for senior high school. So I think that was the number that you wanted. Now, obviously, with the change to full brick and mortar at the junior high school and the senior high school, we're watching to see whether those numbers go up or down, but I will tell you that since the elementary went back, five days a week, brick and mortar, there really wasn't much of a change in those online numbers. Bagley decreased by six students, Latrobe Elementary School decreased by five students, and Montgomery decreased by one. So, you know, I probably think we'll see a little give and take typically, that's that's how.
We've had a lot of those numbers in the room a while, with the twenty-eight, right?
Yes, sir.
You're a lot of those numbers.
Yeah, and we had a little bit of a shift, it always seems to balance the books, you know? But I just thought I would put those numbers up. I broke up the book.
Thank you, Mr. Placca. On your agenda for next, for next week, two weeks on the sixteenth, we will have a resolution to approve admission students for the 2021 school year. Three special students getting listed on your agenda. The curriculum committee meeting minutes from Tuesday, January the nineteenth are attached. The next curriculum committee meeting will be on Tuesday, March sixteenth, at five-thirty PM in the CSC.
Thank you, Mr. Placca. Financial support, keep up the form.
Thank you, Mr. Placca. The treasury report is, the agenda's attached, the payment of bills is attached, and the approval of the tax collection compensation is attached, we do, we discuss the finance, and the next finance meeting, the finance committee meeting minutes from January the twelfth are attached, and the next finance meeting will be Tuesday, March ninth, 2021, five-thirty at the High School Library. Thank you, Mr. Placca.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Facilities operation, what is it, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. Uh, the next facilities, no reports, the next facilities operations planning committee meeting will be Thursday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-one, three-thirty P.M. At the administration building, that again will be a double clock mark. Um, Mr. Thomas, whether it's virtual or in person, thank you.
Thank you. Student activity and regulations, Mr. LaCassio.
I have no reports, Mr. Placats, present. Uh, the next, uh, student activities or recreation committee meetings could be determined. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. LaCassio. Community regulations, Mrs. Sarek.
The, um, minutes of the Latrobe GLSD Park and Recreation Commission meeting that was held on January twenty-first, um, are attached to your agenda today. And the next meeting for the Latrobe GLSD Park and Recreation Commission meeting will be Thursday, February eighteenth at four-thirty at the Latrobe Municipal Building, Council chambers. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarek. Westmoreland Committee, Mrs. May?
Thank you. Um, on your agenda in two weeks will be a resolution to approve participation in the WA joint purchasing consortium for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, authorization for the multi-purpose paper fee. That will be an agenda item in two weeks. The summary of the WA board meeting minutes from the meeting held on January twenty-sixth are attached. And the next WA committee meeting will be held Tuesday, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, seven P.M. And that is a virtual.
Thank you, Mr. Placats. Transportation, Mr. Music?
No reports, evening, Mr. Placats.
CWA's A, D, C, joint operation, Mr. Placats?
Thank you, Mr. Placats. Um, there will be an attachment, um, there is an attachment to your agenda this evening. Next week, we will be voting on approval of the Right of Way Neasement Agreement, granting dear township supervisors temporary and permanent amusement over the East Westmoreland Clear Technologies and property to construct, install, operate, and maintain stormwater lines. And it's a, it's a part of the property that students never go to. It's, it's, it's down in the building, it's pretty far away from their main building. So I don't think any of us have a problem with the R and W, correct, though?
The government, correct.
Um, and we had a meeting on January twenty-seventh. Um, there's an attachment, thank you, Mr. Placats, for a host fee, um, of the minutes of that meeting. And our next joint operating meeting is Wednesday, February twenty-fourth at seven P.M. At EWC, that is my report, Mr. Placats. Okay? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Placats. I think we need board policy and P S, P A, ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Sarek.
Thank you, Mr. Placats. Um, for your reading, um, board members, we have the first reading of three new board policies. Well, I'm sorry, they're not new board policies. Um, policy one of three, um, the title nine, our procedural document is attached and it remains unchanged from last year. Um, the school security, uh, policy eight of five point two just has minor changes in the wording. You'll see those highlighted regarding the authority of school police. It doesn't change anything but a minor wording change. And also the, uh, policy eight twenty-four, maintaining professional adult student boundaries. Um, there's a change in wording just simply for, um, digital learning environment. So if you take the time to look through those, that's the first read, and we will see them again at future meetings. And, um, we, we will be setting a date, it's not yet determined for the next board policy meeting. Thank you, Mr. Placats.
Question, Mrs. Sarek?
Yes.
Will we go to do the second reading, will you have to take your pack to reread all of those again?
Pardon me? Yes, yes, in fact, I have some more to add to it. Because life just isn't enough fun.
Thank you.
Thanks, board. Stick me over there while I stay out of trouble.
Keep her out of the mall, it's good.
I'm a good one, I have to know how I got that assignment.
When it gets nice, we'll watch her walking outside.
Yeah.
Turn the baby.
At least you don't have to buy sleepwear.
Well, that's true. You need all the money you're sitting on.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Placats. Um, have no reports this evening, however, our next technology committee meeting will be Tuesday, February sixteenth, here at the CIC at five-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Health and Safety Committee, Dr. Zorch.
I want to assure our community and our board that we're not supposed to take the adult against our customary concerns with the school students and staff. This is why we gone through this, this is why we've done all the things that we've done to protect our students and our staff. Nobody takes any of this lightly. We've all been very, very concerned. And we've done the best that we can to try to ensure the safety of everyone in our school community. This is a risk-benefit decision. Right now, it seems to me that the risk is less for our students and staff than it is to keep these kids home. That's why we're making this recommendation. We don't want anybody to get sick. I would hate for somebody to get sick and die, everybody's still got this. You know how bad it is when someone's health is compromised, the staff members are always disturbing the rules. We don't want that to happen. And if anyone could inform us that we're taking things lightly, it's just disgusting to me. I think we've done a lot of good with some of this topic. We've tried to do the best we can to protect the safety and health of our students and our students. I hope we don't have to have an ad hoc meeting on this, hopefully, if you're more concerned about. And as of now, you can read the minutes of the last meeting. No further report, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Assistant recommendations, Dr. Perkper.
Yes, um, next week, we will have some resignations as well as retirements on our agenda. Hugh Moxon Chalk Custodian for retirement, Karen Owens, our classroom assistant for retirement, Rissa Suter Custodian resignation, and Thomas Turnbull Junior, baseball assistant resignation. We will also be asking the board to approve professional substitute teachers and to approve support personnel classified positions, which include classroom assistant, a new payroll manager, a part-time secretary for Bagley Elementary School, a health room assistant, and hopefully two custodians. Um, under other business, our parent teacher conferences will be virtual Thursday, March eleventh, from five to eight o'clock P.M. And our eighth grade movie, move-up virtual video presentations will be released March first at glsd.us, our district website. Also, please watch the senior high school webpage for a live question and answer session dates that will be posted. Our next regular board meeting will be held Tuesday, February sixteenth. Please note, there is not a meeting next Tuesday. However, Tuesday, February sixteenth will be our regular board meeting at seven-thirty P.M. Our committee, the whole meeting for March, will be March ninth. And our regular board meeting will be March sixteenth. Thank you, Mr. Placats.
Thank you, Paul. This will be the second part two of the hearing of the president. You have five minutes, anybody want to say anything, please, for you. Here we go, for the minutes. Resolution sixty-nine, what's the question? All of the favor, aye?
Aye.